Welcome, everyone. This is our August regular council meeting. And we have a lot of good news tonight. And we just went through two storms with minimal damage. And things are looking good in terms of our COVID situation. The number of cases positive and also the percent testing positive are going down. And of course, we have our wonderful sense of community that is so important to all of us. So at this point, I'd like to welcome you. And I'm going to mention who else is on the Zoom call. Joining me on council is Councilperson Michael Platt, Councilperson Russ Smith, Councilperson Suzanne Souter, Councilperson Valerie Leary could not join us this evening. Also, we have our city clerk, Brian Whitaker, and our city treasurer Janet Carlin. In addition, we have our city administrator, Bill Borthell, our mayor, Mike Caranta, our police chief, Rick McCabe, building official Jeff Bergstrom. And our host is Kim Burgmiller, who's our council secretary. And she's going to be doing the meeting logistics. Our stenographer Kathy Ririck and our guest Debbie Feal from KCI. And I think you have a colleague with you. So I'm going to make a modification to the agenda and ask that Debbie Feal and KCI make a presentation first in terms of the comprehensive plan. That's something that the planning commission has been working on. That we've gotten a lot of public input. She's going to talk about the process and the steps to move forward. Our action this evening is basically to get it in the record and as a first reading of an ordinance. And then there will be lots of opportunities for everyone to comment on the plan and to provide feedback before we finalize it. So at this point, Debbie, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and start.
Thank you very much. I'm assuming you can see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll move this out. Thank you, commissioners, and especially to the planning commission, who we've been working with for a couple of years on the project. Tonight, we're going to present an overview and highlights. This is a longer PowerPoint presentation that will be put on the city's website for additional information, but I'm going to go over a couple of highlights, let everybody know where we're at, where we're going, and look forward to some input we can get on the project. With me tonight is an engineer in training, rotational engineer with KCI, Madeline Pushkar. This is her first comprehensive plan working with the municipality. So we're very excited to have her. And she's an engineer by trade, but we're getting her to the dark side of planning. So we're enjoying her tonight and her first virtual presentation to municipality. So with that, I'm going to move forward. If, okay. I'd like to thank the planning commission chair, Dave Baldini, and myself. We have put together this presentation for you tonight to go over where basically the project is. These next few slides, I just want to hit the highlights of these. This is mainly for the public intention or new commissioners, new council. The authority to plan for the planning commission is entitled 22, Section 702 State Code. They're tasked with preparing a comprehensive plan for the city of the town. Also, in the same Section 702, subsection B, the comprehensive plan is really a municipal development strategy. And there's several components that are required in this document that somebody's leisure reading, they can go ahead and read this document tomorrow on the website. Also, under Title 22 is population that's greater than 2,000, which is the city of Newcastle, is required to do more than a municipality that's under 2,000. This was a change in the 2015 requirements of the Office of State Planning in the state law. So there's a lot more that has to go into a plan than we had with our first round in 2009 or 2003. The other item I want to bring to everybody's attention is the rezoning. So by state law, within 18 months of adoption of this comprehensive plan, you're required to amend your official zoning map to rezone all the lands with municipality in accordance with the uses of the land provided for in the comprehensive development plan. I am going to put this section on hold for just a minute and reveal some highlights for you. So you'll be happy with the outcome of what the planning commission decided on this task. It has the force of law. Once again, I want to let everyone know this is state law. Your comprehensive plan has the force of law, and no development shall be permitted except as consistent with the plan. So once again, this is general information for the public. At least every five years, you have to review the plan. And you do have to re-adopt at least every 10 years, which is where we're at today. It does have to be passed by Big Brother, which is the state of Delaware Office of State Planning Coordination. They must review it, ensure certification by the governor before it's enacted as a law. And the plan reporting, Newcastle is very good with this. Each year, you must submit an annual report for implementation of what you've done in your comprehensive plan. And you have to identify your development issues, trends, and conditions. If this is not done, it becomes a shelf product, which those days are actually over with land development and regulations. So now let's talk about your plan. In 2003, you had the original plan for, a couple before that, but the original comprehensive plan. In 2009, you provided an update to that plan. In 2016, there was an amendment to the plan. And these amendments were wider, minor. They had to do with suggested land use only, so no text. In 2017, we requested a pre-update review with the state. They actually look at your existing plan and tell you what you need to change and how they can help you out. You had another amendment in 2018 and just recently one in 2020. Both of those were suggested land use as well. So they were comprehensive plan amendments to just the land use portion of the maps. So with this project scope, we've been going at it for quite a while, where we've had to start with four phases, which is collecting our data is usually the first one, the community outreach to kick off the surveys, drafting the plan and getting input. And then we're in our fourth stage, which is the plan presentation tonight, public comment, and then consideration for adoption. So some of the milestones that have been met on this project, there was a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis completed in October 2017. A community survey was completed in August of 2018. Community organizations were all interviewed by the planning commission members between January and December of 2018. The municipal services commission had several good data to be able to include as well as a map. So we worked with them from September 2018 to August of 2019. Three community workshops have been held between April and May of 2019. The state plus draft review was completed between April and May of this year. We've had 15 public meetings between September 2017 and August 2020. And believe it or not, before tonight, we've had four draft plan reviews, plans, between February and August of 2020. So the planning commission and the commission, the council got a really rough draft review. So we're anticipating more comments. What I would like to say in the second bullet is the plus draft review. We sent the rough draft to the state after the city council and the planning commission saw the second draft. And we had minor comments, recommendations, but no certification issues on our rough draft. So that's really good that the city endured, or the state of Delaware, which is, by the way, 24 agencies reviewed the plan and had no certification issues. Most of the information they had was updates to maps, updates to data. So really good job with the planning commission and I think the crafting of the document itself. Some of the plan highlights this year, just to let everybody know what's really changed. The updated census data has been all throughout the document, which you'll see. Large community input and involvement on this plan this round. Increased environment protection chapter, I know the city of Newcastle knows this very well. So that chapter was increased quite a bit. And there was a suggested land use analysis, which is parcel based. So your last plan, as you're aware with your amendments, not every piece of property had a suggested land use. When somebody wanted to come in and redevelopment, they would have to go through this amendment process, which can be lengthy. It could be anyone for four to six months. When we presented our recommendations to the planning commission, we chose at the time to propose no zoning changes. So we actually took the zoning map you recently adopted in March and mirrored the land use to match the zoning. So we do not have any comprehensive rezonings proposed after you adopt your comprehensive plan. This was well thought out by the planning commission. We did not want to take away property rights, as the term downzoning plays unfortunately. So we actually matched the land use, the suggested land use to the zoning. So they will match 100% and you will not have to go through a comprehensive rezone. Intergovernmental plan and initiative reviews has been completed with the state again. Initially with the county, we now have some other intergovernmental coordination to be able to do in the next step. Some other plan highlights, I do have to say really good kudos to the municipal services commission team. They crafted up several pages. They did their, they wrote their own chapter. They had initiatives and goals. They did their own maps. So they were very, and they've met with the city staff, I know, with Bill and his staff as well. So I think this is probably one of the best plans we've had their inclusion in. And they provide a large service to the municipality. So I think it's important. We also put the city initiatives in there. The city has been busy, and you should have credit where credit is due. This also helps you lay up for future funding, competitive funding. You've already got a document that will hopefully help Bill say, this is what you have completed. We always overlook what's been done that's been good for the city and look at everything you still have to do. So this is a nice chapter to read and pat yourself on the back. We reviewed the development trends taking place within this city. We expanded the goals and strategies completely throughout the document and recommended an annual implementation strategy meeting. This is a trend we're putting in all of our plans, where six months prior to the budget process, the planning commission chair sits down with the mayor, the president, the town manager or city administrator, and goes through the comprehensive plan implementation tasks and says, what are we going to do this year? What would we like to do as a priority? And how do we find the funding? That will help your city administrator be able to budget for things. That will help the planning commission get some of the items off the list. And it will help the city commissioners, city council allow a prioritization pattern of stuff being done. We created several additional maps as well. And for the intergovernmental review, this is where we're at right now for the comment coordination. We have finished Office of State Planning Coordination. Once we receive all the comments and after the public hearing, we then send the modified draft with the comments to the state to say, we have coordinated with everybody. We have heard the public. We care about everybody's input, and we're going to, you know, make sure they're all included or considered. So after, we'll start with the Newcastle County Land Use and Special Services Departments. They're going through their start of their comprehensive plan. And we have some sewer information that we put in the plan as well that needs to be updated. Also with WMAPCO, as they have some transportation studies that are very, very pertinent to your plan coming up as well. City of Wilmington, the municipal services commission will have a final draft. They gave their information to us over a year ago. Maybe they have some of their items done already. And we'll also coordinate with the city engineer. We provide this project services, but we want the city engineer to be able to go in there and talk about a lot of the environmental and green street projects you're working on. We did capture, but we want to tweak it and make it the best we can before it's adopted. So when we get to public comment, this is where I want to spend just a little bit of time tonight. The pandemic, as you're aware, with your agenda and budgets, has changed how we present, obviously. So usually, you can sit in a meeting and have workshops and charrettes and talk about what people like about the plan, what they don't like about the plan. It changes a little bit when it's virtual. We usually get less buy-in. We usually get less people to provide comments. And/or we get everybody to talk, and we really need to know the details of what they'd like changed. So what's changed with the pandemic is we can't print the document and leave it at the library or leave it at city hall or leave it at somewhere where people would get coffee or mingle for them to be able to review and peruse and go through the comments, because you're not able to touch the document with multiple hands with COVID. So we're asking that the public, the public comment period, we're going to ask for advanced written comments requested. This is actually a really good opportunity, because then we can catalog all of those, which I'll go to in a minute. But if we receive advanced written comments, as we request in the document, we would be beginning your public period comment tonight, actually starting tomorrow. And it's ending October 12th. So roughly, that's, you know, two months to be able to review the document, provide comment, provide feedback, and, you know, allow Kim and I to be able to serve the people that might not have the modern technology and meet their needs to be able to provide comments as well. The official public hearing right now is scheduled for October 13th. And in the public comment process, once again, we're asking for written submittals on a designated form, I'm going to provide or show you in a minute, and advanced comments requested. So in a normal process where we're face to face and you have monthly meetings where we can do presentations on large screens and people can visit and attend before and after, it's a little bit difficult. But if we had advanced comments prior to the public hearing, we're requesting those. We cannot mandate those. We're requesting those. So at the public hearing, we can be a little bit more prepared for people to be able to make sure their voice was submitted in advance. The accessibility of the plan is going to be on the city's website in a PDF version. So it'll be easy for people to be able to view. It'll be easier for people to be able to print if they choose to. Just a warning, it's about close to 200 pages with the maps. So it's a very large plan with a lot of information in it. And speaking with the city administrator and Kim as well, we understand that people still want a printed version. You can call city hall with your request. And because of the limited hours with the pandemic, they can make an appointment to pick it up. So what we're asking from the public is please use the PDF version or the website as much as possible. The printed out versions, once again, they're color pages, and that's 200 of them. So we're trying to keep the cost down, but we understand the need and the comments are important as well. So we're offering both options, online as well as printed. What we're asking with the written comment format, so this is new because of, once again, the pandemic. We're offering the comment options in Microsoft Word in a PDF document. They can also be handwritten, as long as they're legible, to be very clear. Whoever chooses to handwrite the comments, we just have you print out the form, complete it, scan it, and send it. Or you can print it, complete it, and drop off at city hall. And city hall will make sure it gets to the appropriate contact information for cataloging of the data. So what is the form going to look like and how hard is this going to be for people to do? For those of the council that have completed their homework at the planning commission, this might look a little familiar. So what this is, is we're requesting for review and comments on the draft 2020 comprehensive plan. There's the link to the website. We're releasing it tomorrow. We're also asking the question, do they live within the city limits or they live outside of the city limits? That's really important when you're, I don't want to get this misconstrued, that one person has one weight over the other. This is great to see who has taken the time that lives in the city limits and who has taken the time that lives outside. All the comments will be in this format, and every comment will be entered into a database. So as you see this spreadsheet that I'm showing you on the screen now, this spreadsheet will then be cataloged with everybody's comments. So we will have multiple, multiple pages of this. And then we, KCI, will review these for inclusion. So we'll have another column that would say our recommendation. So we'll sift through all the comments to say, agree, change page 42. Questions or concerns, let's discuss, you know, not understanding. So we're going to have another column where we're going to sift through these and do our professional recommendation on the comments. And then we'd like to present them collectively at a joint planning commission and city council meeting. So we reveal all the public comments. It actually gets to be an exhibit in your plan. And then we go through decisions of what should be considered for inclusion in the final document. All the comments will remain anonymous. So what we have is we have those comments coming directly to KCI. We will be keeping all of those comments or all the emails and everything in a PDF and supplying those to the municipality at the very end for all of their project files. But we, at this point, feel that if the comments can come directly to us, we can stay on schedule. We would catalog those. And to be honest with you, we don't know about local politics or local people that submit things or have any perception of any comments. So we will be able to take a third-party approach and be able to analyze and assess every comment received. So we're having those go directly to the project. outreach@kci.com by October 12th and thanking them for their input. So when you enter in this document, it's just a rap text where you just go through and you can type as much as you want, make this as long as you want. We have the page numbers. For the static form for them to print out, we'll see the columns are a lot bigger for them to be able to write. So we wanted to make the form easy to use, find out if they live in the city or not, and provide the contact information for the project. Once again, if this format's followed, it's very easy for us to cut and paste and be very effective with our tasks and our budget to be able to move forward and give you a collective approach to your data. So the written comment process, once again, I briefly, whenever was the comment submission email is the project. outreach@kci.com. We're asking for advanced written comments due October 12th. This will help us address some of those and be prepared for the public hearing. We are finding public hearings seem to be less effective virtually. I'm not sure if that's the case in the city of Newcastle, but we're finding people are getting tired of talking to their computer screen quite a bit. So they usually bow out of night meetings. So the 2020 schedule, where are we? Tonight, we're doing the draft plan presentation and the public comment release. We're asking for the first read and to set the public hearing. We know there's a lot that can change in between those. So the bookends of doing the first read, setting the public hearing to the adoption, we do not know what we'll get from the public. We do not know what we'll get from intergovernmental coordination. But during that time, we'll constantly be working in the document, working into the spreadsheet. Public comment period opens tomorrow. And then we're asking for those advanced comments to be due October 12th. We're requesting the public hearing with the planning commission as a joint meeting, sorry, be held at October 13th. And that's when the public comment period closes. That is, if you feel comfortable. So at any point, if we feel that we're overwhelmed, we have a lot of comments. This has, you know, got a little bit of derail because of pandemic and the situation we're kind of in. At any time, we can come through and extend the public comment period. But at this time, I think two months right now with, you know, less social activities, I think that's probably a good timeframe for a public review. We are also under the mandate with the state with our extension. So we do need to move the project forward, but we don't want to slight the public at all and for comments. After we would get the review, we'd review the planned comments and prepare the recommendations. So we have plenty of time to do that between August 13th and October 23rd for your special meeting. I do envision getting these comments to you in advance of the meeting. So you can review the comments and our recommendations. And that meeting can be very organized to say, what do we really have to discuss? And what did your consultants advise that aren't really decision-making changes? After that, we would update the plan with the state and public recommendations. We have that as a tight constraint right around the election timeframe. But as we said, we can move along with the project as it's going. After that, we then have to submit the comments that we received from the state and responded to for review and final for our approval letter. That takes 20 working days. And 20 working days in November, December feels like 80 working days. So we'll submit those on November 4th. And we are anticipating a state review comment letter by December 4th. So we can have that council's second read and adoption contingent upon certification from the governor. So this is where the state comes in and says, we're okay. You don't have any certification issues. Please move forward with your adoption contingent upon certification from the governor. At that point, we would do the city final deliverable upon receipt of the governor's certificate. So we can insert that as your last document in the plan. And then we would then go and notify the state and county upon completion and give everybody the updated documents as required. And that, in a nutshell, is where we're at. The project is moving along very well. There was a lot of contributions, a lot of public input, intergovernmental coordination. We went through a lot of state plans that have changed. There's some that just came out last week. There's some that came out a month ago, and we are updated with this document fairly well. So with that, I know that was quick and fast, and we're going to focus. But I would like to open up questions and concerns.
This is Linda Ratchford. I would like to hear first from the chair of the planning commission, David Baldini. Any other comments to add to this? I want to thank him and the rest of the members of the planning commission, who I think some of them are participating in the meeting this evening. It's a lot of hard work and also thank the public for their efforts too. So David, if you would like to say anything?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. I think that Debbie's done a good job explaining what we've got there. I was giving you the highlights. It has indeed been a journey. I mean, we've been working on it just shy of three years. But the document itself is a story about from when we, where we came in 2009 to where we are now. Talks about some of the ideas and the goals and things that were then, the projects that are in process now. And it is surprising for a town this size to have accomplished all of the things that it has listed here in the plan. It's a significant complement to what has been done under the people who have done it. The document itself not only looks at the city within itself, if you will, the neighborhoods that make up the whole of Newcastle, but it now starts to look outward as we start to relate to other cities, other agencies, and how we are tying into their comprehensive plan. So it is kind of important from that perspective. And it's been, like I said, we've had a lot of public comments, a lot of involvement for a lot of folks. So it is not so much the planning commission's document per se, but it is indeed everybody's that made the contribution. So I think by the time we're done, it'll be a very solid baseline as we move forward to take us to the next level of play. So there are my thoughts for the moment.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to open it up to mayor and council. You have any questions for Ms. Field or Mr. Baldini?
This is Ratchford. It's Mike Caranta. I've got one quick question. Okay, proceed.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Okay. Debbie, thanks for your presentation. We have an ordinance tonight, number 528. And in one of the, in one or two locations, it says the draft, there's a date needed for the draft plan. Is this draft dated today or is it going to be draft dated tomorrow? Or what's the effective date? Because I think unless Mr. Losco indicates otherwise, we've got a placeholder here in the ordinance that is, intends to be included or filled in with the draft plan.
Councilperson Ratchford, I have a comment. That has been updated. I don't, maybe you did not. Which includes the date that we will need to, and it's basically the August date.
Got it. Thank you.
Well, the plan date, though, I haven't seen that document. The plan date, this is a draft, and it's just titled August, because the actual plan date will be when you go to the final date of the meeting, when you actually vote on that, that's the actual effective date of the project. Because from the first read to the second read, there's several months for the adoption. So your old comprehensive plan is still ineffective.
Right, but this, but this plan doesn't, this plan itself, though, doesn't have a particular date associated with it?
It has August 2020 written on the document, not a specific date, because we know that we stop intergovernmental coordination.
This is Linda Ratchford again. The way it reads is a 2020 city of Newcastle comprehensive plan draft document, including all associated maps dated August 2020, is adopted as a comprehensive plan for the city of Newcastle in accordance with. Is there, have you seen the language?
I have not.
Is there, are there any issues with this, with that language I'm asking staff?
Dan, are we allowed to put the August date, the August 2020 as the draft document with the date to be updated upon acceptance and adoption?
This is Dan Losco. I guess my question is, is the date on the plan, the final plan, going to change? Or is it going to remain August 2020?
It will change, because we will have changes from intergovernmental coordination. We know we'll have some from the county, WMAPCO and the public. So that changes the document enough.
Right, I think you can leave it as is now. It's merely a first reading, and the ordinance can be amended at time of final adoption to insert the final date.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will then read it with the August 20 date and then correct it later on during the public hearing. Is there going to be any confusion in terms of the fact that we're still operating under the 2009 comprehensive plan? In terms, this doesn't change what we're operating on. It just basically reads into the record the draft plan so that we can finalize it.
Correct, you just had an amendment in July that we had a change in this document already. So that was that land use amendment. So anybody that comes in right now with a land use amendment, they have the right to come in and make a change to the existing 2009 plan or request that we make a change in this plan as we're going through the draft.
But since we're just reading this as a draft ordinance, it's fine.
Correct.
That's a consensus I'm hearing from our city solicitor, Dan Losco. Okay.
Yes, yes, Madam President.
Okay. Any other questions for Debbie or David?
Madam President, Mike, we're on to our time. Let me, I want to thank Mr. Baldini and Let me, I want to thank Mr. Baldini and all the members of the planning commission. I know this process started a couple of years ago and it is an iterative process. It takes an awful lot of time and appreciate his willingness to stick with this and guide the process through and for all the hours that the members of the planning commission put in on it. So I think, and I think it's really, it's, it's, it's an important document for everyone to really look at very carefully and digest and try to understand, because it really does set kind of the big picture for the municipality over the next decade. And so I hope that people will take the time to deliberate, look through it very carefully and provide their feedback. But my thanks to the chairman and all the members of the planning commission. Appreciate their diligence and hard work. Thank you.
I think that is a good point. We very much want people to participate in this process because it's your plan. Any other questions? Okay, at this point, I'm going to go ahead, since it's, we were just talking about it. I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion to consider ordinance number 528 and then ask for a second.
Abate.
Pardon?
Michael Platt, abate.
Okay, motion from Mr. Platt?
Ms. Sauter, second.
Okay, second from Ms. Sauter. I'm going to go ahead and read this and that will start the process. This is ordinance number 528. It's an ordinance to adopt the update to the 2009 Comprehensive Plan entitled, "The 2020 City of Newcastle Comprehensive Plan." Whereas 22 Delaware Chapter Section 702E requires the City of Newcastle to review its comprehensive plan at least every five years and to revise, update, amend, and re-adopt its comprehensive plan at least every 10 years. And whereas the City of Newcastle Planning Commission per 22 Delaware Chapter Section 702, in consultation with KCI Technologies, Inc., State and Local Agencies, and Private Citizens Representing Varied Interests has developed a proposed 2020 Comprehensive Plan. And whereas the proposed 2020 Comprehensive Plan has been developed for 22 Delaware Chapter Section 702, building upon the 2009 Comprehensive Plan, prior amendments thereto, and incorporating the elements and policy recommendations required thereby. And whereas the proposed 2020 Comprehensive Plan has been reviewed by the Office of State Planning Coordination and other state agencies through the preliminary land use service plus review. And whereas the City of Newcastle has determined that the provisions of the proposed 2020 Comprehensive Plan substantially advanced and are reasonably and rationally related to legitimate government interest, including promoting the health, safety, convenience, order, prosperity, and or welfare of the present and future inhabitants of the City of Newcastle. And whereas the draft 2020 City of Newcastle Comprehensive Plan document, including all associated maps dated August 2020, the plus review letter dated May 2020, and public hearing testimony are available for inspection on the city website at www-newcastlecity.dellaware.gov. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Newcastle as follows. The 2020 City of Newcastle Comprehensive Plan document, including all associated maps dated August 2020, is adopted as a comprehensive plan for the City of Newcastle, Delaware in accordance with the Shaping Delaware's Future Act of 1995 and Delaware Code Title 29, Subchapter 1, and the Livable Delaware Initiative. This ordinance is adopted pursuant to the authority conferred upon the City Council of the City of Newcastle, Delaware in the Delaware Code Title 22, Section 702. The visions of this ordinance are severable, and if any of its provisions or any sentence, clause, or paragraph shall be held unconstitutional or in violation of the laws of the State of Delaware by any court or competent jurisdiction. The decisions of such courts shall not affect or impair any of the remaining provisions, which can be given effect in the absence of the invalid provision of application. And so it's ordained that this ordinance should take effect upon adoption by city council, the first reading being August 11th, 2020. So Mr. Losco, at that point, we're, we've read it into the record. We do not have to take a vote, is that correct?
Nothing more to do.
Okay, thank you very much. And thanks, everyone, again, we appreciate that. So at this point, we're going to go back to our regular agenda. And we are going to start on the minutes. And the minutes we will be reviewing are the July 14th, 2020, public hearing. The July 14th, 2020, public hearing and the, and excuse me, the same thing, and July 14th, regular meeting. So, so I want to ask council if there are any comments on any of these documents? I did have a comment on page three and it's on the Board of Health. This is comments from the mayor. So if the mayor has any other comments, this is on the actual regular meeting, not, not the public hearing. It says, "The mayor advised that Mr. Joseph Day's term on the Board of Health has expired. The mayor will renominate Mr. Day to the Board of Health at the next council meeting." I believe that should read the planning commission.
Well, it's kind of funny that he's actually agreed to serve on the Board of Health again as well. But you are correct, that evening, the clarification I was making was I had not been able to coordinate with him and get his confirmation that he wanted to serve again on the planning commission. So you are correct, and that's why his nomination is up tonight. And then similarly, he and I had challenges getting together for his renomination to the Board of Health. And so that's why his name is absent in the Board of Health tonight, but he will be on the docket a month from now. But you're correct, Madam President, good catch, I read that and I didn't catch that. Yes, that should read planning commission in the meeting minutes.
Thank you for that input. Then on that same page three, there is a paragraph on Will Mapco. And the second sentence should read that councilperson Smith, city administrator Barthel, council president Ratchford, and Gail Sisites will review the bidders report back to council. Also, council president Ratchford adds council members to send their comments regarding participation in the process to her. Those are the only comments that I had. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended? Have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the minutes have been approved and they are very important because they are our record. So thank you. At this point, we're going to ask our treasurer to come forward, Janet Carlin, and to give us the treasurer's report. Ms. Carlin, are you there?
I'm asking her to unmute. Yeah, there you go. Yes, I am here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening, everyone. This is the unaudited report, treasurer's report as of July 31st, 2020. The unrestricted funds, $2,738,167.30. Total restricted funds, $2,274,180.67. Total cash in the account, $5,02347.97. And that's pretty much all I can tell you, because we are only into this one month. So I would like to mention that looking at the budget versus actual figures on the report that you all received, the percentage, percentage wise, things look about the same as they did last year. However, the actual tax monies that we received so far are like $85,000 less than what we had at this point last year. Now, those monies that have, that you see as $381,000 on your report does not include any escrow money. So these are monies that just regular taxpayers have submitted. So not to get discouraged about this, because, you know, I think we did a good job in doing the budgeting. Also, and I think Bill is going to speak to this, property taxes, we didn't, we don't show anything on, as a receipt from June, but we will have received $40,000 for June. It's just late coming in. But that's pretty much all I have to tell you tonight.
Well, thank you. And as you noted, this is just the first month in, that we also budgeted very conservatively. We want to monitor the situation in these, these tough times.
Yes, and that's, that's right, that's what we're doing. And as you all know, the budget compared to last year, we reduced by $305,000. So yes, we, we will, will continue to monitor this. But, but I believe Bill has some good news when he is going to be speaking, so.
Okay, great. Do you want to talk about that now, Mr. Barthel, or you want to wait till your report?
It's up to you, Madam President. If you want to just finish with the treasurer, because I'll just follow right in behind her anyway, and then I can go through my entire report, if that's okay with you.
That's fine. The mayor has a question?
Yeah, so for the treasurer, so Ms. Carlin, I want to make sure that I understand what you said. So at this point, in the normal course of business, maybe I misunderstood you. Are we short $85,000 in property tax receipts? But some of that is explained by monies that are being held in escrow. But it sounds like, though, we are not receiving that which is owed to us and that is different than other fiscal years, or is that the same?
Janet, would you like me to jump in there?
Yeah, that would be fine, okay.
Okay, okay. No, what, what she's saying basically is this with the transfer tax. Or I'm sorry, with the, with the escrowed mortgage collection. Last year, we collected through the month of, for the first month of, or through the month of July, $466,717. This year, we've collected $381,193. So the only reason we're sharing, and again, as, as the treasurer said, I'll share other numbers with you. But we're just making a point that from what we typically get in June or what we received last year, we're down 18%. That's the monies that we typically get from mortgages that are not escrowed. And if council remembers, when we went through the whole budget process, that was one of the bigger concerns that we had. That about two thirds of our tax collection comes from folks that don't escrow their mortgages. So basically, what we're just saying is, from a year comparison, we're down 18%. Now, what she's also referring to in terms of the transfer tax, we would have received 40,003. We did not receive any money from the county in July. So we reached out to the county to find out why. And the reason, the reason for us not getting any money for transfer tax from June sales was because the county has implemented a new system evidently. So they told us that we should be expecting a check. And I just, I was in the office today and I got, you know, we got public, or we got notice that we will be getting a check for $40,383. So now, that number is down 28 and a half percent from transfer tax that we received last year. So last year, we received 56,526. The number we got from the county is $40,383. The reason, another reason we mention that is because if you look at the treasures or the month, the budget report for the month of July, there's no number for transfer tax. So we're filling in that blank and then just indicating the difference between this year and last year.
So is it, so, so that helps. Go ahead, Janet.
So we have, we have not received any monies from the escrow accounts, from any mortgage company.
Right.
That's just because of a processing lag possibly?
That's how, that's exactly what that is. And we typically received, the monies we typically received in the early part of July are typically from people who are not escrowing. They're dropping off checks, they're coming in with cash. And so the majority of the funds that will, or then we'll start to see probably in the next couple of weeks, more money coming in from funds that are escrowed. We're just trying to share with you like a snapshot of where we are after one month into the annual budget.
But I guess, I guess my question is this, based upon, and thank you for your explanation, Bill, and thank you for your explanation, Janet. But, and I was jotting down numbers as you were speaking. But it does sound as if, though, we are encountering some headwinds on people that don't escrow taxes, that we are going to be down, right now, we're showing an 18% reduction, but that's going to be reduced. That number will, that 18% will be reduced based upon monies that come in from the county by delay. But it still sounds like half of that, or approximately half of it, is perhaps not being paid.
Nope, you're confusing, there, you're confusing the transfer tax that came in from the county.
Okay.
Okay, there are two separate items. Transfer tax that's coming in from the county that was delayed because they've evidently implemented a new system. That's number one. And that's a, that's down 28 and a half percent from year over year. The escrow tax mortgage collection or the tax mortgages that we received last year is down about 18%. And so, yes, if you wanted to, I suppose you could draw a conclusion after the first month based on, and I think this is what the treasurer was trying to say, that we presented conservative estimates and projections when we did our budget. And if you're looking strictly at the first month returns, they are down year over year. But again, I mean, we've got a long ways to go, you know. But to your question, we were, we're facing some headwinds, if you wanted to put it that way.
Right.
You know, you could, I guess, conceivably draw that conclusion, but again, it's only one month.
I would, this is President Ratchford, I would hesitate to draw any conclusions at this point, because even people that are gonna pay in a few days, that, you know, there's a lot of distractions right now. A lot of concerns about their own personal economic situation. So it may be just a delay due to so many other factors. But it's too early to tell, but we are prepared, because of our very conservative budgeting, to address. And we will continue to monitor this situation.
That's exactly right, yes.
Councilman Platt here. Just even in processing insurance claims and so forth, there's a lot of people working from home. And I think, put it in a nutshell, yeah, things are going to be backed up, because people are working from home. Things are not going to happen the way they should be. I mean, even we have our offices down to limited people. I mean, we're functioning, but we're not functioning at 100%. Neither are these banks. The money's probably going to come in. I mean, I guarantee, I would bet it would come in.
Well, again, if you're talking about the monies that are escrowed through mortgage companies, I agree. I don't believe, and I think we've already started to get some calls from lenders to see if people are, you know, like for example, that are, are escrowing, you know, wanting to know if taxes have been paid. But I agree, I think once we, but remember, that's two thirds of what we collect is the, is the non-escrow, or is the non-escrow funds. But to your point about what's going to come in from the mortgage companies, I agree 100%. I don't think we're going to have any issue with that. I think they're either gonna, either they've got the mortgage payments being paid and the escrow money's there and they're going to send it, or they don't, and they're going to send it anyway, because they don't want the owner occupant to be foreclosed upon.
Correct.
But that's, but again, that's also kind of, and you're right. And I think, Mrs. Ratchford, you're correct. I, I don't know that I would recommend drawing any conclusion from this at this time per se, because we're, we're just getting into it. We'll start to see what starts rolling in now and of course, through September. But we wanted to just give you, you know, an update. Here's where we are based on one month. Now, I will also, unless, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith.
I just want to say, there may be a bit of confusion too, because the county sent out tax bills to those who escrow. They sent out bills to everybody and they have to sort that out and the banks have to sort that out. So that may have added to a certain amount of confusion with the banks and with those people. I went ahead and paid a bill that I didn't know. Because I have, I have two houses and, you know, I thought it was for the other house. And I got a bill for this house, which is in escrow. But the county sent out, the contractor for the county sent out bills to everybody, whether they were escrow or not.
Madam President, I don't, I don't, I, one more comment. And I'm not trying to be alarmist here, but, you know, the numbers are interesting, right? We get 12 months, we only get 12 cracks at this, and I. We get 12 months, we only get 12 cracks at this, and I, and it's, it's interesting, and I think it bears watching. The fact that we have, I think the key factors here are things that I think everybody took into consideration during the budget time, and that is, two-thirds of the property taxes that are owed the city every year are not escrowed. They have to be personally planned and budgeted for by the, by the property owners. With unemployment being what it is, there's a good chance that some of that is gonna go unpaid. And so, I was just trying to tease out if, whether or not we were starting to see some early indicators of what that might be. I'm not alarmed, it's only one month, but I think that just, my only point is it bears watching. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented, unaudited?
So, move.
Do you have a second?
Yes.
And Mr. Platt, and all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have approved the report for this month unanimously. Thank you very much, we appreciate all your hard work and watching things very closely for us at this point. Okay, bye-bye. I'm going to ask for reports from the city administrator and staff.
Okay, Madam President, thank you. Just to kind of continue, I guess, along the whole topic of budget update, obviously, we talked about the transfer tax and the escrowed tax mortgage collection. I will say that we did get some good news, as the treasurer reported, or inferred, we did get municipal street aid this year, $120,147. If you recall, we weren't sure what we would be getting from the state on that, it pretty much was what we got last year, slightly lower. So, that's good news. We did receive $35,000 for Separation Day, so they did fund that. And we also received $23,746, I'm sorry, we will be receiving in December, $23,746 towards the pension supplements, the police pension supplement. If you recall, we weren't sure, we zeroed that out on the budget, we weren't sure what we would be receiving. Last year, we budgeted, we projected 80,000, it came in at 68,500. So, we did get something which is a positive. So, let you know about that. Also, we received our workers' comp premium renewal, our renewal for our workers' comp, and the premium came in at $90,845. That's a reduction of $27,811, or 23.4%, off of last year's number, which last year was 118,656. This is for a number of reasons, it's because the group, the whole DPD group as a whole is doing a very good job in keeping claims down, and the city is doing a very good job as well, through effort and through some luck, I would say. Our experience modification rating went from 1.18 to 0.902, so that's a reduction in our rating of 23.6%. So, the bottom line is, with the workers' comp premium being reduced to the 90,845, we'll have, we're basically saving $59,155 within our budget, or our projected 150,000, which is what we projected the premium to be. Now, we projected that high, because we didn't realize that the modifications were gonna be reduced, and we knew we had an increase in payroll, and typically, the audits are done based on payroll increases. So, anyway, the good news is, we've got a savings of about 59,000 there. As I mentioned, the tax transfer, we talked about that, and the non-escrow tax mortgage collection, we talked about that. So, before I go to my next topic, does anyone have any questions on any of the budget numbers? Okay. The next thing I just wanted to mention, Madam President, you'd asked that I make a common, little comment about our preparedness for storms in general. Basically, I'll just say, you know, the chief and I are in constant contact prior, you know, the day prior, couple of days prior, depending on, you know, the reports of the storm track, and this storm was no different than that. He and I spoke a few times the day before the storm. He had been in touch with Del Dot, he had been in touch with Goodwill on a couple of occasions, as I think I mentioned in an email to council. He and I got on a call with the county around 5:30, 6 o'clock, the night before the storm. Our public works guys were out the night before, or the day before, cleaning drains, primarily the ones that were focusing, I should say, on the ones where we have issues, but basically trying to clean as many drains as they could, getting prepared for the storm, and they were out the day of the storm, cleaning drains. We'd also included MSC in our communication, again, the communication that the chief had put out, that I forwarded on to council, so they were up to speed on everything we were doing. Now, the chief and I did talk about possibly doing a meeting with everyone, we have done that in the past. We've had various agencies meet at the police station in the, in the community room, a couple, number of the groups I just mentioned, we did that for Sandy, I believe, and for other, a couple of other storms that came through, that were coming, that were projected to come through, and to be, let's just say, be more significant than what we were looking at last week. Not to dismiss that storm, obviously, it could have been a lot worse, but, you know, we felt that there wasn't a reason for us to all, you know, put together a meeting, communicate the way we did. At the end of the day, I think that was the way for us to handle it. But I can assure you that anytime we get these weather reports, or those types of things, whether it be this type of storm, whether it be a snowstorm or whatever, we are all communicating on a regular basis, a couple of days before, a day before, the evening of, and of course, the day of. And I mean, the day of the storm, obviously, the chief is out and about, our public works guys are out and about, I'm out and about, trying to get, you know, an upfront view of, you know, what's going on, when, where. And so, I think that, you know, again, at the end of the day, you know, this storm worked out okay for us, again, it could have been a lot worse, but I think in general, whenever we have these types of situations, the residents and council can be assured that we are on top of it. You're muted.
Just wanted to mention, in relation to the storm, that I did reach out to Pam Paton, who's the general manager for MSC, and asked them about their experience in the storm. They said they did not have outages, but a couple of flickers, and in fact, they could send, they were able to send crews to the city of Dover, because the city of Dover lost about a third of their service territory, and it was hugely helpful to them, and they, the city had overthanked them for their assistance, and said that they would be there for us if the storm came our way. So, that's good that we were in a fortunate situation on these past two storms. Okay, Mr. Berthel, you have other things to share?
I don't, Madam President, unless council has any more questions for me, then I'm just gonna ask Jeff to give an update on Delaware Street.
Okay, Delaware Street's going well. It's apparently hanging real close to the budget numbers, with the possible exception, our area brick is slightly higher than originally anticipated, we're coming closer to three-foot of brick per linear foot of curb, compared to the two-foot we optimistically estimated in first place, but I suppose those numbers will work out before the project's over. We have essentially completed work by the end of, we anticipate completing the work within 30 days or so from now, for our underground stuff, and be, being ready for pavement. That being said, there's still somewhere between eight and 15 gas services that need to go in, and Del Marva is supposed to be starting now. We are not sure exactly what that's gonna, how that's gonna play out, and that'll drive, that'll drive the project. If the gas services aren't completed, I wouldn't recommend it, we do finish paving on the roads, because we'll have, you know, 15 holes in the brand-new pavement. So, you just have to see how Del Marva's handling the situation. We've had a number of utility boxes and other little areas to deal with, and we've, actually, I think with only a couple hundred square foot of pavement, taking care of every issue, I think the project's looking really, pretty sweet. Yeah, I think it'll look a lot sweeter when we see the strand finished down, you know, at the corner of Delaware out to the park, and that should be done maybe next week. So, I'm really very pleased with the way things are going. We anticipate, it's conceivable, if Del Marva does everything, that we'll be, have pavement in this year, and, you know, middle to end of September through the middle of October.
That'd be great. Questions for Mr. Berkstrom about that? I know I've gotten some compliments on the work, and compliments on how polite the workers are, and so that's, that's a good thing to hear back from our residents. I did have one other question for you, Mr. Berkstrom, that's regarding, I received a question about the status of the bulkhead and battery park. I understand there's a permit process going on.
Right. We may, Denrick closed us up a little bit, but I think we're on track to get that permit and do that project at the end of this year, if Denrick comes through with a permit. I'm anticipating it'll be okay for Mr. Berthel to sign the permit to replace that bulkhead for the city, and I should have it ready for signature, maybe as soon as later this week. So, we'll just have to wait and see how Denrick does.
Yeah, I understand the trustees didn't get the shoreline grant, so it's gonna be riprap rather than...
Yes. Well, we replaced the origin, the wooden bulkhead, which, incidentally, we have a nice picture of from 1924, and wanted to know if it was pre-court jurisdiction, and the, a whole bunch of nice pictures from '24, when they opened the ferry from Delaware Street, but the, the project will have to, the law says we have to rip out the creosote infested wood and replace it with something else, we're gonna replace it with riprap in the same location. So, it's a really inconsequential permit to grant. The city has to pay 150 bucks for the permit, and has to ask the state for, state and court together for their blessing, and I assume they'll, they'll give it to us right away.
I want to thank the trust for all their efforts to maintain Battery Park, and that, it's also my understanding that the riprap is just what we're gonna do now for stabilization, that doesn't rule out some future living shoreline, which I think would be wonderful, but it is quite expensive to do, and there've been some preliminary work on the concept.
That's, that's correct. You could always replace the riprap, or just add to it with a living shoreway, shoreline out in front of it. So, we have miles of riprap, of course, in the city, and this is our only little stretch, really, a wood bulkhead, so it's gonna go the way wooden bulkheads should go often.
Councilman Smith, again, I am, there was a bit of concern about not, there not being a fence down there, and I understand there actually is a fence for safety purposes. I was talking to a member of the trustees today.
Councilperson Satter, yes, that fence has been there for at least a couple of months.
Mm-hmm. And yet, it came up that there wasn't one.
Well, it doesn't seem like whoever said that walks down there very often.
Right.
And just to, just to verify, Ms. Rattrick, and there's no structural concerns on, on the warp at all, it's just a matter of replacing the bulkhead and stabilizing the shore?
Yes, it's a, it's about, I think, 160 feet of wooden bulkhead, it's, if it fell in tomorrow, assuming no one, you know, got, fell into it, why, it would take a long time before much bad would happen to even the walkway there by the river. But a good storm could damage it, that's why we have armoring on the, on the river.
Thank you.
Mr. Berkstrom, Councilman Platt, just a quick question, I was looking through the minutes of previous meetings, and May 12th, you said that the Fourth Street Bridge will have a major repaving job in July. Has that been backed off, or?
I, that, what, what I meant to say, if I didn't say it, was that that's what Del Dot promised the city. What Del Dot promises the city, and what they actually do, can, could be two different things for a variety of reasons, it could be budgetary constraints, or, or just their shifting priorities. I don't know the answer to why that's not done. There should be a minor project, which they did, and then there should be a major repaving project, and they said this year, and they thought it was gonna be scheduled for July.
Okay, fair enough.
Anything else, Mr. Berkstrom?
Not for me.
Okay. Chief?
Thank you, and good evening, and I guess the good news is, my report will be brief. If you look at the quality-of-life complaints from July, those were actually discussed in last month's meetings, that happened towards the end. You know, the typical rash of theft of motor vehicles, we did end up making arrests on, on that, as I talked about last month. And then the only other thing I want to bring up is if you look at the statistics, where it says July 2020, and it's, I have June for 2020, and June for 2019, that should actually be July. Other than that, let's see, have any questions?
I noticed at least one person stopped in the high water, even though there was plenty of notification. Did you have, if you could talk about that, this is from the storm high water on Dobbinsville, Route 9 South.
Right. So, we did at the last minute make a decision not to do the hard closure, and that came for, it was a result of a couple of things. Del Dot, as you can imagine, got very busy with the tornado coming through, so they were all diverted, and their resources were diverted, which put a pretty significant delay in the, in the hard closure, which ended up kind of working out. We didn't get the flooding to the level that we had thought. I don't know that we got any calls, maybe, I don't know if the fire department got any calls. I turned that day over around 4 o'clock to one of my captains, and up until then, we had not received any calls at all. So, you know, we, we did dodge a significant event there, for sure.
Suzanne Satter, I just have a question. We did, you know, we were lucky this time, it wasn't too bad, but if people drive around those barriers and need to be pulled out, are they fined, or does the fire company bill them, or something to reimburse them for having to go out and rescue them when they drove around a clearly marked closure?
Yes, when we can, we cite them. And one of the things that I am gonna look into is the ability to actually fund, find funding that can allow us to actually put an overtime car there. We, the reason we came up with the hard closure was to prevent that. So, the barriers that we wanted to put in there, when we have a known event, where we know there's going to be flooding, are Jersey barriers, and you're just, you're just not gonna drive around those. So, it's the soft closure that we have the issues, where people just blatantly move the stuff to the side, drive into high water and get stuck. So, yes, we do cite people very frequently, and in some cases, we've charged them criminally. We've, we had an incident where a school bus driver drove, got stuck, and had children on the bus, so we charged him with multiple counts of endangering the welfare of children. So, yes, we do take that very seriously.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
President Rattrick, I did note a UPS truck there this year, this is after you went home, so, so someone was gonna have to rescue that truck. So, that's, that's what I worry about, is also not only the person driving, because you could drown, but also our own people who have to go perform the rescue, because it puts all of them at risk, the fire company and our police, and takes away from the resources. So, I applaud any efforts to be more aggressive on that.
That was, that was the fundamental reasoning behind creating the hard closure. You know, having been here 20 years and watching this happen season after season, it led us to that decision to use the Jersey barrier. So, we'll get better at implementing that, for sure, but we were, you know, again, we were caught off guard with the tornadoes that drew all the resources that we needed, so...
All right, thank you. Yeah, except, we are very fortunate, some other places had lost a lot of power and a lot more damage, so we were fortunate. Thank you.
And Chief Michael Platt, once again, I actually drove down there, I think he did a pretty good job of securing the highway. Did hear some complaints from people in Dobbinsville that we didn't shut it down at Washington Street, or you didn't shut it down at Washington Street. I'd imagine that's a pretty hard task, but, you know, people were driving down, they're seeing the barricades, and then coming back up. The neighbors were complaining that they were just turning around, haphazardly, whatever it was.
Yeah, so, again, the only way to prevent that would actually be to station somebody there, which is why I want to find a way to do that through funding. We can't, obviously, with the resources we have. which is why I want to find a way to do that through, through funding. We can't, obviously, with the resources we have. But we had a, we actually had a signboard at Washington and West 7th Street.
Yeah.
And we had a signboard at Washington in 273. So they're just ignoring it. And then, then they're going to Dobbinsville and then they're realizing, you know, this was probably not a good idea. So it's an issue in Dobbinsville. They, they, they have a right to be a little frustrated with that. I'm sorry.
Wait, is the, this is beyond you, chief. So is this Washington Street problem a new one? I get the impression that it is, that the, maybe the building of the garrison contributed. There may be not enough drainage, but I don't remember that being that big of a problem before, but it seems like recently that area has become a problem area. Is there a way to fix that? Is there a structural way to fix that particular area?
Well, so when I first started here, that, that intersection flooded significantly, pretty regularly, actually, West 7th and Washington. And I don't know that that was a major issue for this storm. I think, if, if I'm correct, I think the concern was that, that there may not have been what appeared to have been enough advanced warning that, that Route 9 was closed. I think that was the issue with Dobbinsville. Although, like I said, we, we had plenty of advance warning. People were just ignoring it. As far as the water at the, I'm assuming you're talking West 7th and Washington. That, that used to, that used to flood pretty regularly. It hasn't like that in a while.
Any other question? Mr. Barthel, you have another comment?
Yeah, Madam President, Jeff, I see your hand up. Do you want to comment on the work that we did at that intersection?
Sure. 10 years ago, we sent a crew in to clean out the, the root matter, the fragmites that grow in the Gambicord Marsh. And we did that again during the construction of the garrison. Categorically, the garrison was 100% impervious before we started. They do not contribute one iota. In fact, I believe post runoff is a little bit less for a minor storm than it would be before they started. But the roots keep growing back. Del Dot doesn't have the political will to go out there and dig the fragmites out of there. You're going to see that we're going to, again, spray for fragmites this year and try to knock them back a little bit to keep. The root mats are tremendous. They, they actually grew two feet above the level, the standing water level and parts of that. And then when you get a big rain event and come down Washington Street, can't, can't go anywhere, just piled up on the road. We also improved the drainage dealt with at the intersection and raised the pavement ever so slightly at, at that intersection in that repaving project, both of which helped minimize the localized flooding right at 7th and Washington.
Okay. Any other comments from city administrator?
No, that's it. Thank you, Madam President.
Do you want to update us on the Will Mapco process, the consultant selection?
Sure. Just that, as you mentioned before, you, Councilman Smith, myself and Gail Sykes were involved in the process. We had met with Will Mapco, or the three of us had met with Will Mapco last winter, and then Mr. Smith got involved. We had the, the process of evaluating a number of, I believe there were seven proposals. We got together as a group and evaluated the folks we thought were best suited for the project. And that was WRA, now I'm drawing a blank, Tool from Maryland and Century.
Century Engineering.
Right. And Century Engineering, which is, which is actually the group that we, we chose. And so we had last Friday, an all afternoon interview with the folks from Will Mapco and Del Dot and ourselves. And we interviewed those three folks. And as I said, the, the, the over, the overall choice and the best choice we thought was Century Engineering, which was the group that we had picked out from the beginning when we did our own individual evaluations. And at the end of the day, it was a unanimous decision with the group from Will Mapco and, and Del Dot. And I mean, I think it's a, I think it's a great project. I think it's going to be great information that we're going to be able to accumulate and put together and use for, after we're done with the evaluation of the, you know, when the project is complete, as the council president has pretty much filled everybody in on. And so, you know, we're ready to go. I guess the next steps, we're just waiting for Will Mapco to, to take us to the next step, I believe.
And this will be very participative with council involvement and the public involvement. So we're, we're looking forward to that. So if you have a list of transportation issues, keep it.
Well, I think this was really solid process and that we did get the best contractor. These folks showed a lot of enthusiasm for the project, which is important. And they did their research and they got to know us and our issues rather than just giving us the standard engineering solution for any project. So I expect we'll have really good results from this contractor. And I think we had a really good working relationship in the team. We, we pretty much came to the same conclusions on all of the contractors.
Thank you. And that's all?
That's it. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Next item is council communications. Anything council would like to share?
Suzanne Satter, I have one issue. I had a resident contact me with some concerns about the property tax rebate for seniors with limited income. This person was concerned that perhaps we could publicize it a little more for next year because with circumstances of COVID, people's income may be down and those who never qualified in the past might qualify now and might not be aware of it. And perhaps something in addition to being part of the cryer announcement that goes out with the MSC bills. There weren't many suggestions as to what that might be, except perhaps a copy of the discount letter, which is sent to people who qualified for the discount in the past to make it stand out, I guess, because it would be an extra piece of paper in the bill. But perhaps something to think about before we receive that next, for next year.
Thank you. Anyone else like to share something?
President, Councilman Platt, I have a few things. On July 27th, I got a phone call about three o'clock in the afternoon about the project that's happening up in Amazon. I know there was a meeting for the planning commission on Monday, the 28th. Residents just had some concerns. The lawyers and the owners of the property came up with them on Monday morning. It went pretty well, from what I understand. They got a lot of their suggestions met. And I'd also just like to kind of shout out to Mr. Baldini and the planning commission. Because I actually sat through a three hour meeting Monday night and they actually did, they did a very, they did an excellent job for volunteers. I don't think people realize how much work goes into it. And I honestly didn't. I know it was a lot of work, but I didn't realize it's that much. And they, they deserve a slap on the back. They really did because they did a nice job.
Anything else?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Mike.
Now I'm done. Councilman Smith takes the floor.
Councilman Smith, just, just some good news. Tom Watt down at the corner here at, at Third and Chestnuts, you know, started keeping bees this year and he'd never done that before and decided to get into it. And man, has he gotten into it. I know some of you have seen him on Facebook and they'll tell you everything you want to know about bees. The trustees have been very happy to see him because they put in two pollinator meadows. And now we have pollinators and they're out there pollinating like crazy. Tom didn't think he was going to have honey until next year. And yet, you know, here we go. We've got the Fort Casimir Honey Company and he's producing honey right now. So that's, that's great stuff and a great, great benefit to the neighborhood. Just thought those of you who hadn't heard, we'd want to know about that. But it's really cool.
That is great news.
That's very sweet. Sorry, couldn't help myself. Sorry.
Any other council comments at this point? I'm going to turn it over to the mayor.
All right, hearing none. So thanks. A couple of things. One, hours moving on, so I'll be quick here. I sent all of you my remarks and comments, so you have that in your email. You do have before you tonight, a couple of Board of Health nominations and I would, a lot of those are renewals. As I said, I'll have another one next month because I wasn't able to connect with Mr. Day, who's the current chair. He's agreed to stay on. He prefers that I continue to look for a replacement. And so I will do that, but he's agreed to stay on for the time being until I can find a replacement. I would note, and I, and I said this in my commentary and I've shared this with the council president, at some point, probably, you know, maybe before the end of the year or sometime soon, it would be really terrific to look at the code and perhaps consider staggering some of these terms. They all seem to come due for this particular board all at the same time. So it'd be helpful to not have all of, for continuity purpose sakes and for other reasons, good management. I think it'd be good to kind of stagger the terms. So that would be something that council would have to consider at a different time. The Arts Council did meet a couple of weeks ago and we talked about having another movie. We will do it in September. As I reported last month, we'll do it at an hour that begins, you know, earlier in the evening. That'll accomplish a couple of things. One, we'll hopefully have a little cooler weather. Two, it gets dark sooner in September and therefore the movie would end earlier, not as late as we encountered the first time we tried this. So for those reasons, and then we'll also look to maybe move since school will be back in session, whether it's kids staying home and doing distance learning or whether they're going in person. We'll look to maybe do this on a Friday or maybe even a Saturday, but probably a Friday evening if possible. We're going to at least explore that, see if that's, if the vendor is available and willing. Because that way we might be able to include families as opposed to a weeknight once the summer is, if you will, kind of not officially, but kind of unofficially drawn to a close. Finally, I want to also mention that I included in my comments that I shared for you, shared with you rather, the governor through the Department of the State Housing Authority has issued two programs that are available to residents if they are mortgage, they pay mortgages and it provides mortgage assistance if they find themselves struggling to make their payments due to employment circumstances and/or other economic factors that relate to COVID-19. Similarly, there's a rent assistance program for people as well. And so both those programs are available. I, I shared with you in that email, the DSHA flyer that has their website where you can pass that along to any constituents who might be in need of that kind of help. Finally, with all of the, the rain that we've got this week, a couple of observations that I want to compliment the council president because she mentioned one of the things that I was going to just say. But I, I think sometimes, you know, we don't recognize the good works that we do enough. And I think, you know, all that rain that we got over the last week or so is exhibit A that we ought to be very thankful for the investment that the trustees made for water remediation in Battery Park. You know, all of us who've been here know that, you know, the park used to flood with an inch or two of rain, not six inches or seven inches or eight inches. It's repeated storms. And so all that went away. Similarly, for my neighbors on Third Street, between Foundry and South, used to create horrific flooding, but because of the actions taken by the council, the city staff, assistance with state funding from our state delegation and trustees, were able to further mitigate that issue. Several of those homes used to flood in cases like this and that's all gone. And that's, you know, heartwarming to see. Those are the kinds of reasons why we do what we do. And I think everybody ought to be very proud of the efforts that helped mitigate all of that. Finally, but with all the rain and warm weather, we are going to get a lot of overgrown weeds. I know that I heard from Mr. Thomas in Dobbinsville and Mr. Barthel got the Antonio folks over there right away. And we were able to clean up that. But there are going to be other areas that are going to get overgrown here pretty quick because of the amount of rain and warm weather that we're going to have. And so I would just encourage people to report that in as quickly as possible. Thank you. With that, I have nothing else.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor. I just want to mention a couple of things. I, I agree with the mayor that we need to look at the Board of Health, I think for, for several reasons. The ordinance itself is, is fairly antiquated. I mean, when you start talking about privies, it makes you wonder, you know, what we're referring to in terms of the challenges. And I think also, since it was put into code, there have probably been a lot of changes in terms who's responsible for us. I mean, the county does our sewer now. The state does a lot of the things related to things like restaurants or whatever. So I think it is worthwhile a look. The city solicitor did do some research. We are required to have a Board of Health. And also I think that the Board of Health has a valuable role in the city. And in the past, they have, you know, shed light on situations where we had, I have, say, a home that was a, a health hazard to the community and they would have to have an emergency ruling on that or they've provided an advisory role. So I would, I certainly want to thank all the people that are willing to step forward that the mayor has nominated, that would be willing to be reappointed and any, you know, future people that I would appreciate their comments and thoughts on, on, you know, how to better structure that. Apparently, a lot of cities do not have a Board of Health. And if they don't, then it has to be the council. And I think it would be, it's better to keep that in the Board of Health. Also, there's another board, that's the Board of Building Appeals, which I don't think has met in years, but they do have a role in terms of handling appeal cases. And I have a notice that other cities basically refer that to the Board of Adjustment. They say their Board of Appeals is the Board of Adjustment. So I think that's something we, we should look at. Another thing we want to, may want to monitor, MSC does have a rebate program for the electric chargers, vehicle chargers. It's a wonderful thing. We want to encourage electric vehicles in our city. It's a good thing for the environment. It's, you know, a lot of people that are interested in that type of technology. We, I know we have at least a couple of them now on, that are using household voltage. But it's something council may need to address as we move forward. I know the mayor has spoken to the architect about any historical things because they can be, I would say fairly obtrusive if they're curbside. So that may be something we need to look at from an historical perspective. Obviously, in a parking lot, that's a great location, but right on a brick sidewalk, we, I think we might need to look at that. And then also are there issues about if, if, you know, if someone has a charging station and then, you know, you know, is there any issue about, you know, that is public property, so anyone can park there. But there may be some concerns from someone investing in a charging station and not being able to access the charging station. So just something to think about as we learn more about the technology. Those, that's the only thing that I have at this point. So.
Madam President, may I, for just a second?
Yeah.
So I know Blue would have liked to, I'm not, this little service is out working hard. They actually got all the lights on Stuyvesant Avenue energized and what a difference it makes out here.
Wonderful.
You, you go, the neighbors behind are jealous at this point because they can't wait for them to get back there. But it's really looking nice and I got to give them a lot of credit there. I know they're downtown and keeping the city running, but they're also making a lot of progress out here. So I just thought everybody should know that.
That's great. I'm glad you made it. I know they were delayed some because of the weather issues. But that's good that it's making a, a big difference for the neighborhood. So any other comments from council? We're going to move on to this point to public comments. So we will, if you would raise your hand, either via that Zoom app or if you would, you can dial, you can hit star nine on your phone. Is it pound nine or star nine?
I think it's star nine.
Star nine, star nine. On your phone, if you would like to make comments, we do ask that you limit it to three minutes, that you identify yourself and where, you know, what street you live on, and that you're free to comment on anything on the agenda. We do have some, two, we have two resolutions on, for nominating people, and then we also have a discussion topic. So, at this point, I'll open it up for public comments. Would anyone like to speak?
I have Mr. Gross, Philip Gross.
Okay, Mr. Gross, go ahead. Mr. Gross?
He's muted.
He's muted.
I'm asking him to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Is this time for comments in general, or just on topics that were on the agenda or the budget?
Comments can be on any topic. This is for both general comments and agenda topics. We make it, we're making it one comment period right now.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to thank MSC for keeping the power on, and a big shout out to the city workers, because last Tuesday, it was horrendous outside, and they really kept pushing it, so I think they publicly should be thanked, as well as a little thank you in their paycheck. As far as the J.C.'s and the partnership, I tell you what, the concerts have been going flawlessly, a very welcome distraction to what's going on with the storms and the coronavirus. The one update I do have is, last meeting, I did mention that there was a council person that did not wear a mask, and he was meandering around, socializing, and I did receive a few emails, so I just wanted it to be on the record that it was Councilman Platt that was the person that, the council person that was not following the directives that were set forth. Now for questions. The money that's coming in for Separation Day, what was the amount, and where will it be kept, and will we be asking for more money next year for the event?
I guess that question's for me, Madam President. I said it was $35,000, and it'll be kept in the bank. And yes, we will probably be asking for more money next year.
Okay.
It shows, it shows up on the Treasury's report every month. It's in a separate account.
Will we be entitled to basically double dipping sits, for just one event, the same event?
We will have that much money in, in that account, yes.
Okay. And I guess lastly, what was the product that will be used to replace or shore up the wood bulkhead?
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yeah, I apologize.
You're, you're on mute.
I'm sorry, it was a question, where's the money?
What, what would be, what are they going to use to shore up the shoreline at the bulkhead?
It'll be a riprap cross-section similar to the dykes along the, along the river everywhere else. There's some of it just immediately to the south of it that you can, you can see is a standard detail.
And it's called rift?
Rip, R.I.P., R.A.P.
Oh, okay.
You can see the Coast Guard publishes little handbooks on how it needs to be done. I mean, sorry, the Corps of Engineers publishes little handbooks on how it needs to be done, so.
I really appreciate that.
Madam President, Madam President, time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gross, appreciate it. Anyone else that would like to comment?
I don't see any other hands at this time.
Okay. Okay, well, people can always reach, reach any of us. Call the city office, and any questions or concerns, we're happy to, to help you. Well, I'd like to go back to the rest of the agenda. I'm going to move the discussion to the end and, and work on the resolutions for nominations. The first one is a motion, discussion, and vote on a resolution regarding the appointment of Mr. Joe Day.
Every day.
Mr. Day is being reappointed to the Planning Commission. He, in March, he filled an unexpired term, and so.
I just wanted to hear that.
And at this point, he, we, as the mayor is reappointing him again, and his appointment needs to be confirmed by council, so I'm going to ask if I have a motion for Resolution 2020-18.
So be it.
Mr. Platt, and then a second.
Ms. Sauer, a second.
Okay, Ms. Sauer, thank you. I'm going to read this, and we'll have some discussion. It's a resolution confirming the mayor's reappointment to the Planning Commission of Joseph F. Day III, whereas the city, the Newcastle City Code provides that the mayor of the city of Newcastle appoint nine members to the Planning Commission, subject to confirmation by city council, each for a three-year term, and where there is currently one expired position on the Planning Commission, and whereas the city council proposes to confirm the reappointment of Joseph F. Day III to the Planning Commission with that term ending on July 11, 2023. Now therefore, it be resolved that the city council hereby appoints the following person to the Planning Commission, Joseph F. Day III, Planning Commission, term ending July 11, 2023. Is Mr. Day here this evening?
I'm asking him to, there you go.
I am here.
Hi, Mr. Day, would you like to say something?
Um, no, well, just very briefly, I do look forward to continue to serve, and I truly believe it's an honor, and I appreciate the appointment.
Well, we thank you. It's a lot of work, and thank also for chairing the Board of Health, and, you know, so you're doing double duty, we very much appreciate that. Any questions for Mr. Day? Okay, thank you. I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2020-18, appointing, reappointing Mr. Day to the Planning Commission, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, congratulations, Mr. Day, you have been unanimously reappointed.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next is Resolution 2019-19. It's a resolution confirming the mayor's reappointments to the Board of Health, and to have a motion to consider these reappointments.
So be it.
Motion for Mr. Smith, anyone have a second?
Second.
For Ms. Sauer, thank you. I'm going to read the resolution. It's Resolution 2019-19. It's a resolution confirming the mayor's reappointments to the Board of Health, whereas the Newcastle City Code provides that the mayor of Newcastle appoints six members of the Board of Health, subject to confirmation by city council for two-year terms, and whereas there are currently three positions eligible for appointment on the Board of Health, and whereas the city council proposes to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Eleanor Green to the Board of Health for a two-year term ending on September 11, 2022, and William Hinkowski and Dr. Joanne Biola, each for a two-year term ending on October 9, 2022. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council hereby confirms the appointment of the following persons to the Board of Health. Eleanor Green, term ending September 11, 2022. William Hinkowski, term ending October 9, 2022. Dr. Joanne Biola, term ending October 9, 2022. Are any of these nominees on the call this evening?
I don't see any of those, no.
Okay, well, they are all up for reappointment, and we do appreciate their service, and as required by our code, we are required to have some, some particular expertise, and then also to have that, the public view, so we thank you very much for being willing to step up again. At this point, I'm going to ask for a vote. That's Resolution 2019-19. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the mayor's reappointments to the Board of Health have been passed unanimously, so congratulations to all of them, and we certainly appreciate all their service. At this point, I'm going to go to the, what will be the last item, since I've made some changes in the order this evening. That will be council discussion and possible action on city's operations, budget, or recovery due to COVID-19, and I'd like to ask the city administrator to provide an update to us to begin with, and then we can have some discussion.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. First of all, to date, we've spent $22,759 on COVID-related expenses, of which, of which, $5,574 of that has been through police grants. The remaining $17,185 has been submitted to the county through the CARES Act, and we fully expect to get reimbursed for that $17,185. Obviously, we continue to have expenses, and we will continue to submit for reimbursement. As I mentioned to council last month, we had arranged with Leila Hammerun, who's now with Tetra Tech, to discuss and put together a proposal for us for opening the city office. Jeff, Teresa and I met with, with Leila last week, along with an engineer from Tetra Tech. We discussed everything from building systems, including air quality, HVAC filter replacements, the possibility of replacing an entire HVAC unit, no-touch faucets, improvements to workstations, space, spatial issues, and space dividers, et cetera. By the week's end, by the end of this week, or hopefully by next week, we will receive from them, based on the conversation, an actual action plan and actual items for us to review and provide feedback to them for. So, you know, we are looking at, obviously, our vision is to get to a point where we can fully open the office. I can't say exactly when that time is, but we are looking at various things. In addition to what I just mentioned, Teresa has been working with a representative of a company called Risk Control Services, Scott Stroh. This service is provided to the city because of our relationship with DEFIT and our relationship with Strategic Insurance Partners, the folks that do our, you know, our comp plan. We've worked with Scott and that group on a number of things, including evaluating city parks for safety issues, our safety committee and other things, you know, in the pack. But what we're working on with these folks now is basically, we're developing an infectious disease preparedness and response plan for reopening the office. So we're doing that in conjunction with the conversations that I just said that we're having with the folks from Tetra Tech. This plan is basically, at this point, a 16-page document with policies and procedures that is a draft at this point, but is with the folks from Risk Control Services, their COVID-19 planning experts. So they're looking at that for her review and comment, and I expect to get that back shortly. So once we get that back and the information we receive from Tetra Tech, as I said, we're working diligently to put these things together so that we can have a safe, safe opening for everybody, you know, within the, within the city. In addition to those two things, we're also getting a quote to install a buzzer system for the front door that will be, will be accessible to the folks up front and in the back if need be, but the reason for that is so that, once that's installed, you know, we'll just be able to, in a more safe manner, open the door, once we get to a point where if and when, or when we're opening to the public without appointments, we'll be able to do that in a, you know, in a more safe manner. You know, I've mentioned that we've been trying to maintain one person in the office throughout all of this. Right now, we're getting up to, we are getting to a point where we are looking at and having two people at one time and possibly three. Obviously, we're still, we're still kind of evaluating that. It's more for workload situation, but we're doing it with safe spacing, the six-foot requirements, the disinfecting that we need to do, the requirements to wear masks. So we are, we are starting to, to, you know, get into the office with more than one person, but as I said, I'm not rushing into it full-blown. We're still in phase two with the governor's phasing. I was on a call with the governor today, along with other managers, the mayor was on the call. There was no reference to phase three. He did say that the numbers within the state are getting better, but there was no reference to phase three, and if I had to bet, it's going to look a lot different than what he talked about phase three being two or three months ago. So anyway, again, we're looking at it based on the phasing and then the other things I just mentioned to you. As was mentioned before, we are accepting appointments. We are accepting people, we are allowing people into the office by appointment only. We started that for the purposes of receiving tax payments. We do have people that want to come in and still pay cash, and people that want to come in and pay by check, but they still want to come in and do it in person. I would say, based on my conversations with staff, that those numbers of folks has not been as brisk as it were, you know, in normal years. We're still getting people dropping payments off and that type of thing, but the actual folks coming in and paying with cash and wanting us to meet and pay by check, I think is, is a lower number than it has been, like I said, in normal times. I've not really heard any complaints about, you know, following those procedures from residents. I'm sure, I mean, you know, if you folks had or have, I'm sure that, you know, you would have shared that with me, or will share that with me. But like I said, we're doing this methodically, and I think we're getting to a point, you know, again, we're just continuing to evaluate. There's been no cut in services from the beginning. We continue to do permits, trash, recycling, and other things that, you know, that were, that are asked of us from residents, and we'll continue to do that.
Questions? Questions or comments from council?
Mr. Platt, I got a quick question. We're also working with a study about building a citywide campus. At one point, do we say we're going to go in one direction or another? Just for a simple fact, I know the study's not 100% completed, or that's at least my impression, but do we want to spend all the money on Delaware Street where we could be moving out in two years? If it works out that way, I'm just, it's hypothetical, and, you know, I just hate to spend good money if it's bad.
And that's a great question, and so my thought on this, and the opinion, my opinion on this is that if we were to submit anything of significant cost or significant capital expenditure, we would submit it first to the county for preapproval. Now, we're going to do, a lot of the things that we can do for the HVA systems, for example, are, as I said, different types of filtering systems, those types of things. My thought is, these are expenditures that are required for us to do through the care, or, you know, for us to open in a safe manner, and that I believe we can make a really strong argument for, that we should be reimbursed by, and through the CARES Act. As to whether, you know, when you make that decision, as to whether you want to look at, you know, actually begin, or if you decide to move to the new, a new location or stay where we're at, I think that's a little ways down the line. I mean, obviously, there's a presentation next Monday for council on that. It's very preliminary at this point. I'm not sure we're going to have the funds at this point to go to the next step with that study in this fiscal year, but I guess to answer your question, and to really get to the point of your question is, these expenditures are being, anything I'm not sure of, we're running first through the county. So, so we're doing everything, we're doing our due diligence, we're not going to, now, you had said, Mr. Platt, I think at the last meeting, you know, I mentioned that there are things that, whether we get reimbursed for it or not, we're going to do, because we're going to make sure that the residents and the people that come into our facilities are safe, and we're going to make sure that our employees are safe. So, you know, we're not going to cut expenses at the expense of safety for anyone, but if we're going to put in a new HVA system, that's, and I assume that's kind of where you're going, that would obviously be something that we would be submitting for approval.
Right, that's a large amount of money.
It is, absolutely.
Not only, my next thought would be, not only for, like I say, COVID-19, are we also, are you looking at making the building more secure just from a physical standpoint? And then we've talked about that prior, you know, where somebody could just not hop the gate anymore, or.
Actually, we, we had looked at that, you're obviously, you're talking about 220. We had looked at that, at that a bunch of years ago, when we, we fitted out the freestand, you know, we went from basically like enclosed cubicles to more of the open space that we currently have.
Right.
And it was determined that in order to try to do that with the architecture and what would be required, it wasn't feasible, let me put it that way. So to answer your question, we are looking at some plastic, you know, portable walls, that type of thing, but I don't think we're at a point where we would be able to fully secure that building to the extent that we would like to, which would go full circle to your question, the need to move to another facility.
And so, Mayor, fair enough.
That's the mayor. Fair enough.
The buzzer system, which is the same type of system that MSC is employing at their office, the problem is, you know, the area for a resident or business to, you know, actually come in and give a payment or fill out a permit is really only enough room for one person or one family group. So in some ways, that's, I guess, some degree of security and you buzz one person in at a time, but it doesn't provide the kind of security that Mr. Platt is referring to, so.
And, you know, I, you know, I actually kicked that over to the chief. I know we've talked about, you know, ways that we can potentially look at some of the things you're talking about. But again, we've looked at it, and it's not going to get to the degree that you're thinking or that we would like, let me put it that way.
The county's not going to pay for it?
No. County's not going to pay for physical security. Correct.
Only COVID expenses.
COVID, right, COVID, COVID-related health security.
And then MSC, they had over a year ago, put up some, some more security-type things, which also have the double benefit now of helping with the COVID situation. So they're in effect ahead of us on that particular situation, but also they want to clarify is, the city is operating, we're providing our full services. We are, you know, are fully open. We just don't have the doors open, so any, you know, people can walk in and out, but neither do stores or retail or other places. There's got to be a system at this point to make sure everyone's safe. I wanted to bring up the bike race. Have you heard anything, Mr. Barthel?
Not since I can, not since I presented to council last month on that, no, I'm not.
I think that's something we probably need to go ahead and make a decision, so. I think we need to find out on that situation. I, it didn't sound very hopeful before, and I'm not sure that we could even do any kind of modify anything, and I'm not sure about Delaware City. So if you could confirm that, we, I think we need to make a decision. The other thing is, I wanted to bring up in terms of looking at our situation from our employees have done a wonderful job. They've really, you know, operated seamlessly and stepped up to the plate. And I think that they all deserve our thanks and support. I think particularly the police department has had to deal with a lot of issues in regards to the enforcement related to the pandemic and other situations that, you know, basically they are very much in, I would call, a high-risk category like from a, you know, an, you know, exposure standpoint because of the nature of their job, just like Councilperson Larry, who's a paramedic, and Mr. Platt, who's, you know, in the funeral business, those, those are other, you know, high-risk type, type functions. So it also has come to our attention that, that because of all the requirements and demands on the police department, that the members of the police department had been asked to some of the, well, I guess the whole department had been asked to postpone their vacations for a period of time, which is, in that particular case, is the only department, I understand, Mr. Barthel, the other departments have been operating as, as as normal.
That's correct. Nobody's, nobody has had any issues in regard to vacation or any other time off. If they wanted it, they could take it.
And so, so I bring up the topic to council, and also any perspective from the city administrator, the police chief would help. I mean, we, what we want to do is, we're asking a lot of our employees, and we want to be fair to them. I mean, other cities have looked at some modifications in procedures or, and how they are approaching things because, because it is, it is a very, very tough, tough job. And we want to, we want to make sure that, you know, we are recognizing those efforts. I think that we've been fortunate because of all these safety measures, we haven't been in the situation where, you know, we've had, you know, a loss of in the sense of a lot of people have to stay home because of exposure or illness, and so far, we have been fortunate because of all these efforts, and, and so the trash is picked up and, you know, the laws are enforced. So I am concerned about, you know, what we've asked people to do in terms of impacts on their personals, like what they couldn't take vacation. So any, any comments from the chief or the city administrator?
You're muted, chief.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, no, I appreciate the recognition. That means a lot. It means a lot to the men and women here. And you're right, I did, I enacted something that's in our contract that allows me to basically call, call an emergency and forego a lot of, you know, the standard practices that we use when it comes to to vacation and stuff, and stuff like that. So we've, you know, we've gotten full persistent, full participation from, from the rank and file here, which is, you know, as a supervisor, it's impressive. I've called last-minute meetings, I've asked for, I've mobilized this group at least three times, and I've gotten full participation each time. The last-minute meetings were to make sure that everybody was on the same page with, we all know how fast-moving some of this, some of these developments were with COVID and with the unrest. And it just, I didn't get any pushback. I didn't get any, you know, there were folks recognized that, you know, they could have said it, they could have been sick for really two weeks and and been covered by COVID pay, and we didn't have any of those issues, and we're, we're unique. Not a lot of agencies went, got this kind of participation. So I certainly do appreciate the recognition. These folks did, they did put up, they did put up a good fight throughout this.
Ms. Barthel, do you have any comments?
I don't have much, Madam President, President, to add to that, as you and I pretty much have discussed and kind of as you had just said. You know, our folks have not had any issues with needing or, well, wanting to take vacation. We've not had any, we've been able to, the way we've been able to staff and the way we've done things, I mean, I've got people on vacation this week, next week. So there really have been no issues from that perspective. I mean, you've offered or suggested expanding what the chief had been requesting of council or, you know, you know, previous discussions or whatever, expanding that to the rest of the organization, and then, and as, you know, as I told you, I mean, I think, I mean, that's, we certainly appreciate that, you know, that gesture, but I think, you know, like I said, we have not been, I don't think in the same situation that, you know, incurring the same things that the chief and his folks have incurred.
And I think that some of the other cities have addressed specifically the first responders because of, you know, the risk category, and in our particular case, because we've asked something of them in terms of to forego some, you know, the time that they had already made plans to spend with their family or whatever. And so what, what is the right action, you know, for the city in terms of, you know, to recognize that? Would it be, would it be something like some type of 40 hours of added time that they would need to use within a certain period of time, subject, of course, to availability? This would be something that if, say, if things, you know, were slow and there could be some time off that we could provide to the police department, is that something that makes sense? And what do other council members think?
Oh, this is Councilman Smith. I was thinking in the same directions, direction that police obviously served above and beyond anybody else. And if we, if our treasury was in a different condition, I would think we should be giving out some monetary rewards. However, that's not within our grasp right now. I was thinking that 40 hours is probably a realistic number as far as annual leave is concerned. And so that's kind of where I landed on that. Another interesting thing that may seem trivial, but I did notice something online, and they have these COVID 19 service badges that are like military service ribbons. And I would like us to get them for the officers, no matter what else we do. I think they could point that out as a point of pride, since they did indeed go through a battle.
Other comments from council?
And President, Councilman Platt. A lot of people are on the front lines, and I totally agree that a lot of people lives were changed through this event. I know mine was just, I've been tested multiple times. I've dealt with deaths in families, deaths, you know, and it was difficult for everyone. And I personally can't imagine coming from a very large family of police officers and not having a criminal record that what these guys went through. I mean, not only they fight in a pandemic where you're about to get sick, but they're getting bottles of frozen urine thrown at them. They're getting spit on. They're getting, you name it, it was happening to them, you know, all bearings being shot from swing shots. And maybe our guys didn't experience that, but when they went to work every night, they had to worry about it. They had to worry about getting shot. They had to worry about being stabbed. They had to be worried about somebody throwing a multi cup or gasoline bomb at them. And I kind of agree with Councilman Smith. If the chief can arrange it, I think we should give these guys some time off and ladies to decompress. I think it should be department-wide, and they truly deserve it. We've got a great police force. These guys go out there every day, they work hard. They cover pretty much the entire city constantly. I mean, I'd love to know what miles they put on the cars every day. You just see them all over the place. So I'm 100% with Councilman Smith.
Okay.
Well, one thing, I think you sort of got, got to, Councilman Platt, is that the chief was talking about just rewarding the frontline staff, and I think this ought to be top to bottom within the department, because everybody performed above and beyond the call of duty.
I think, Chief, but I would include the city administrator. The city administrator was doing a working vacation when all this started, was on vacation, and basically has been, been called as, as being the supervisor of this group for the same. And I think that we should, we should provide some flexibility for the people that really couldn't take their vacation as scheduled like others. So I think that that would be appropriate. If, do, if we all agree, we could ask the city administrator to put in the proper parameters. I mean, certain things like, I mean, the money, I mean, you can't turn this vacation, you know, this, this, this time off or whatever we call it, it's basically at the discretion of the chief. It's can't be cashed in, it can't be used in a, you know, as a, as a carryover. It must have some type of deadline. I don't think you want to make it too short. I don't know what people are thinking is a reasonable deadline, I mean, by mid-next year? Or I don't know if the chief has any observations on when, because I just would hate to think someone's losing out because we made them not take vacation and they still had to, you know, carry a big responsibility, because everyone, and I just want to point out that vacation time is based on your hire date. It's not like everybody gets it on January 1. It rolls over. So if someone's vacation was in April and they couldn't go, not that they couldn't go anywhere, because none of us could go anywhere, but they couldn't take any personal time, then they basically, it would, that clock would be ticking and it would, it would be gone. So I think that we need to recognize that. Chief, do you have any thoughts on timing?
Well, let me first say, I appreciate the discussion. It means a lot. Yeah, I think it's important to manage it so that it's not too short that people are forced to burn it, but at the same time, you know, give it some, give it some end life. And we can certainly manage that, and it's going to be especially effective for the folks that, that don't have a lot of time on it, which is a, you know, significant amount of people here. There's a lot of young folks here, so. But I would, I would think that, you know, it would be, if it's its own bank, if it's its own, that can't be mixed with anything else that you recognize when you're using it and how you're using it. You know, it's certainly manageable, and I think 40 hours is very, very generous, so.
And that would be, you think, end of the year or mid-next year?
I would say no sooner than mid-next year, for sure. That way, we're not forcing people to to burn it. And they would recognize too, that at the end of life, it's gone, so. You know, those are all things that, you know, would help make it easier to manage.
We do appreciate, and the community appreciates the work that you do, and, and the, you know, the the respect and support for residents. Any other thoughts on the time limit?
Suzanne Satter here. First of all, yes, I agree also in that the entire police department, not just the frontline officers, deserve this recognition, and I think 40 hours is a reasonable amount. I agree too that at a minimum, it needs to be till the middle of next year to use it, because as the chief said, if you make it too short a window, then that compresses it, and it makes it more difficult to manage to still have adequate coverage. So perhaps maybe even December 31st of '21 instead of mid-next year. I don't know, would that be unmanageable? Administrator or chief?
I don't believe it would be.
Oh, I think we could handle that.
Yeah.
Councilperson said, I agree with you. I think the chief should just be able to manage this. I mean, that's, that's what we pay him for, and he should be pretty much in charge of this, and, I mean, if guys need time off right now just to decompress, let them take it. I mean, and they deserve it. They've earned it.
And that's a very important point. It is a very, very tough job. So I think, I guess, at this point, if we're all in a consensus here, I think we, everyone agrees. Now, if you don't agree, if you would speak up, then we're just instruct the city administrator and the chief to work out the details.
Absolutely. I'm in agreement.
Okay. Okay. Point, and anything else from council that we need to work on?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.